We'll call to order the Monday, April 13th meeting of the Verona Common Council, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the roll call. Ms. Schofield, if you would, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
And Alderperson Years.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery is absent and excused this evening.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, so we will proceed with the agenda. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? If so, if you'd please come to the podium, there should be a sign-up sheet, and we would ask that you would introduce yourself for our benefit and those watching at home.
Hello, my name is Doug Cislack. I live at 377 West Chapel Royal Drive. Just take a moment here to sign in. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you today, before you today. I am before you today regarding item 9A1 on your agenda involving the development at Lot 1 and issues regarding the proposed bridge widening project on Locust Road and Highway 18151. I'd like to ask the council to deny or postpone the development at Lot 1 until environmental and land use conflicts can be addressed. While the bridge is not on the agenda, time is of the essence on this issue because the design is going out for bids April 21st, according to city staff. I'm also asking the council to insist on a safer bridge. With respect to Lot 1 development, I have stormwater concerns. Within the packet that was provided to the Plant Commission, there's a document GECP Lot 1 illustrates stormwaters routed directly to city-owned stormwater facilities adjacent to the site. Contrary to staff testimony, routing of stormwater directly to city-owned facilities would be considered an extraordinary subsidy to the developer, not afforded to other developments. Also, the condition of the final plat included approval of stormwater management plans to ensure adequate lands have been set aside for stormwater management. During the recent April 8th Plant Commission meeting, staff reported that this analysis had been, has been done, conducted for this development. I've requested those designs and included, I've requested those designs for Lot 1 and Lot 2, but, and looked over their files, but to my knowledge, they don't exist. Please consider taking action to postpone or deny this development until this issue can be addressed. On that same illustration, there's a proposed grading and location of a proposed apartment and facilities. The apartment, the parking lot stormwater is directed to municipal storm drains. The proposed development will shed stormwaters off the proposed building and the surrounding lands onto a feedlot immediately adjacent to the proposed development to the west. I have concerns that this added runoff is unplanned and will likely result in water quality violations associated with the livestock facility that could impact the neighboring, the nearby trout fishery and tributary to Sugar River. No discussion or analysis of this issue was considered, though I brought it up a number of times. Please consider taking action to postpone or deny this development until this issue can be addressed. With regard to land use conflicts, ATCP 51 is a Wisconsin Administrative Code regarding livestock facility siting and recommends 100-foot setback for livestock facilities to a property line. City staff considered the setback at the recent Plant Commission meeting, but incorrectly applied the setback to the building, from the building to the feedlot where he thought it was greater than 100 feet. The design before you today puts a 45-unit apartment building within 40 feet of the property line, clearly not enough to mitigate the conflict in land use. Please consider taking action to postpone or deny this development until this issue can be addressed. In the 2010 Plant Commission approved a rezone of the lots, the western, on western part of West Chapel Royal Drive, from mixed residential or duplexes to neighborhood residential or single-family because the claim of the developer could not sell the lots for duplexes. While I was pleased to find rationale in the written record, no evidence or analysis was given on the developer's claim for rezoning, but, and the rezoning was approved. I'm asking the council today to deny or seek modification on this development because the original plat had a gradation from apartment buildings, I guess, to the north, followed by the duplexes, and those then, were then to single-family. By giving the rezone, it now goes directly from apartment buildings to single-family. I and my neighbors have expressed a desire for more to be done with grading to block or buffer the visual impact of the apartment building on the single-family homes. This impact causes an undue and adverse impact on my home and the neighboring homes. Finally, just as a point of order, there is a 12, December 5th, '05 Plant Commission, the Plant Commission previously approved a lower-density plan for this lot, and no action has been taken to rescind that action. With respect to the bridge widening and the safety concerns there, currently, the bridge on Locust Road does not support bicycle or pedestrian traffic. For almost four years, this bridge was the only ingress and egress from the subdivisions and a significant hazard to pedestrian and bicycle traffic. A pedestrian sidewalk is now proposed to be built on the east side, east side of the bridge versus carrying the existing sidewalks that approach either side of the bridge, on both sides, across the bridge. This configuration is contrary to the previous agreement and cost estimates with the developers and is unsafe. I'm disappointed, very disappointed in all the decision, I want you to know it, sorry about that. I'm very disappointed in the decision-making that enabled developer profits to come before public safety. First, that the city allowed significant development in this area without a safe bridge, and second, that you waited for more than four years to take any action to improve safety, and then only to take what is arguably a half-measure to protect the public. While I'm not an expert on traffic safety, one only needs to test-drive or walk your designs to see that they're hazardous. While I understand that safety comes at a cost, those costs should have been planned for, implemented, and borne by the developers and or the city. City staff report the additional sidewalk will cost $800,000. If the cost of safety is too high, perhaps the development should have been planned elsewhere or differently. As it stands now, we're creating an unusual and uncontrolled crossing on both sides of this bridge. This is very unusual and seemingly inconsistent with the city's recent referendum that plans to put elementary-school-aged children on that bridge. Please consider taking action to require a safe bridge with pedestrian lanes that continue across the bridge in the alignment with the current sidewalks. Finally, with respect to open records, the city's 2007 bridge cost estimates include, included two sidewalks, but the 2013 agreement lists only one. There is no record of the Plant Commission, or any individual, or any government body considering or authorizing that change, even though the bridge widening is a condition of the final plat approval. There is no record demonstrating the compliance with the surety of the 2008 bridge agreement. If the 2008 bridge agreement were enforced, the bridge would be installed by now and likely with two sidewalks. Clearly, the city's management enforcement of these agreements has significantly benefited the developers. I imagine annual interest and cost of capital savings on the, on a project of this scale would be substantial. I want to know how the city's management of these agreements benefited the citizens of Verona. Don't you? Wouldn't you want to know how that would benefit me and everybody else? Yeah. This is a serious matter involving public safety and stewardship of significant financial resources for this project, yet the only records that exist are the original and amended agreements. I'd like to believe that we can do much better for our citizens. I'm very disappointed in the city's compliance with open records during the December, or I'm sorry, the January 8th, I'm sorry, April 8th Plant Commission meeting. Staff referred to documents that I've repeatedly requested, but to date have not been provided. These include bridge designs, DOT approvals, stormwater designs, and city approvals of those stormwater designs. I have continued to request information about the individuals and decisions and rationale given for the bridge project and design, yet nothing has been provided, except again, the original agreements. Tonight, I've identified numerous instances where the city has taken actions to benefit the developers, some with an extraordinary financial benefit to them. Now, I'm asking the members of the city council to take actions that would benefit me and the citizens of Verona, and insist on deliberate, open, and transparent government. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have these tabbed to record if you like.
Sure, and we will, when we get to this on the agenda, Doug, then we will have, we will respond to your concerns as we did at the Plant Commission. There, it was public hearing, we dealt with it right away.
Right.
So, we'll work through other items on the agenda, and then we will respond to those concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment? Anyone else that wishes to speak? It's your last opportunity for the evening. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? Not seeing any, so we will move on. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the March 23rd meeting of the Common Council, and those minutes were included with your packet. What is your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and the minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business, we have a few announcements this evening, but they are going to be covered by Mr. Burns. So, we will just, I just have two under the Mayor's business. One is a proclamation regarding Arbor Day, and I will read the proclamation. Whereas Arbor Day was first observed in Nebraska in 1872 by the planting of more than 1 million trees throughout the state, and whereas Arbor Day is now annually observed throughout the United States, and whereas the city of Verona celebrates our 20th consecutive year of being named a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and whereas trees in our cities increase property values, beautify our community, and protect our environment. Now therefore, I, John Holkimer, Mayor of the City of Verona, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 24, 2015, as Arbor Day in the City of Verona, and encourage all citizens to observe Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees in order to ensure the beauty and the value of our community for generations to come. That would be dated and signed this 13th day of April, 2015. So, again, this is our 20th year that we have done this. David Walker and our city staff do an excellent job, and we hear a lot of compliments from residents of the city. So, job well done to David and the staff. Next, under Mayor's business, we have this evening with us Chief Mearland from Fitchroona EMS, and Chief, the chief is going to give us an update on some staffing plans. So, with that, I turn it over to you, Brian.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Last year, we developed a staffing plan at Fitchroona to take care of some changes that we see coming up, and really what we were looking for last year was some changes, improvements in continuity of staff, of staff involvement. We were looking for some improvements of span of control. As you know, in 2017, we may well be in three stations with three ambulances, and the current management capabilities are insufficient for a staff of that size. We are also looking for better product involvement, project involvement from our staff and responsibilities for those, and we're also looking for some promotability within our staff. Right now, a staff paramedic might join us and be with us for 20 years, and there's really no opportunity for promotion in those 20 years, and it makes it a difficult, a difficult time for the staff and a difficult time to manage a group that really doesn't see an opportunity for promotability. So, we devised a plan last year that would have given us three paramedic captains that we would hire, and we got funding for that to hire one captain in each of this year and each of the next two years for half a year each. We continue to look at that program, and that, we've really found that as we are growing, our current deputy chief's position, we have one deputy chief that is the operations deputy, and he splits his time between deputy chief and on the ambulance. As we become more busy on the ambulances, we'll be close to 3,000 calls this year, the time for that individual to actually be a deputy chief and carry through those responsibilities is becoming marginal. So, we are a little bit concerned about that. The other side of it that we are concerned about is three captains. We were going to be a little bit top-heavy, so it wasn't a real good mix. In talking with our paramedics, we realized that most paramedics that work 24-hour staff, 24-hour shift are not going to give up that to become a paramedic captain that would work five days a week, so it also took away the opportunity for a promotable position. So, in working with the staff, we really developed, I think, a better plan, and not only a better plan for the department, but a better plan for the finances of the department, and one that actually saves quite a bit of money. So, instead of the three captains, what we were, what we're proposing now, and we have before you tonight, is the opportunity to promote three lieutenants, and those would be three lieutenants that would be promoted from within, and they would stay on 24-hour shifts. We would then remove the position of deputy chief, part-time, paramedic, part-time, move that position to a full-time deputy chief of operations, and then backfill with that paramedic. And by doing that, we certainly get the continuity of message, because if we want to do training, it's really a joint venture in training. Somebody does the training on Tuesday, somebody else does it on Wednesday, somebody else does it on Thursday. To have that deputy chief there five days a week would give us that continuity. Certainly, the span of control is adequate. We have 14 paramedics right now. We'll be going to 21 paramedics if indeed plans go through for a third ambulance in 2017, and I believe that the three stations, then we would have a lieutenant in charge of each one of those stations, so that fits very nicely as well. The other bottom line of this really is that in 2016, it would mean a savings to Verona alone of almost $40,000. It would mean a savings in 16 and 17, in total, of $86,000, and in those two years for the district, it would mean $215,000 of the savings. So, I think we're getting a much better plan. It's much better from an operation standpoint. It's much better from a management standpoint, and it's better from a staff standpoint. So, I did put out a budget comparison. I think you all might have seen it electronically, and in that, there's actually, what I did is I outlined both the cap, the budget as it would turn out with the captains over the next three years, and then I put right next to that how it would compare with the lieutenant and deputy chief position. And so, it's pretty obvious where the cost savings come there, and in looking at it, the one thing that, there's a couple of things that it might not give us quite as good a control over, but I think it's perfectly adequate. One of the things we're looking at is the ability to have someone step in for a mandate. If we get a call from at 5:00 in the morning, "I'm sick, my child is sick, I can't come in," we don't have any choice. We have to have an ambulance staffed up and ready to go. That deputy chief of operations, starting at 6:30, can easily step into that position that morning until we can get a staff member to come in. Now, we only mandated eight times this year, so it isn't a huge issue, but I believe it's an issue that's really important to the medics because nobody wants to be called in unnecessarily, or to their mind way of thinking, when they've got other plans. And if we can't get voluntary coverage, we have no choice, but we have to mandate coverage. And that happened, as I say, eight times in the last year, so I believe that this will satisfactorily handle that. The other big thing is that promotability for the lieutenants, and the staff is very much behind that, and I believe I have 10 paramedics, 12 paramedics that would be eligible, the way we've got outlined right now, and it looks like I'll probably have about 10 of them that will apply for that potential promotion. So, I think it's a win-win around. It certainly is moving the chairs a little bit, but I think it's much stronger for us, not only today, but in the long run. Questions, concerns? We'd like to start that hiring process as soon as we can, but I wanted to make sure that, the City of Pittsburgh has given us unanimous approval to move forward, as has the town of Verona, and so, just looking for your approval to move forward with that process.
Sure. Any questions or comments? Mr. Years, please.
Sure. You already touched on mandates, which is, you know, one of the big things for me, and I would like to get to the point where we could get 24-hour supervisory coverage at some point, and I know you have plans for something down the line of getting a captain's position in.
We do.
Could you explain that a little bit?
Sure. In the, in the overall staffing plan, we do have three captains' positions identified, unfunded, and I don't believe that the three of those will not be needed until we get four to five stations. But I could see the addition of a captain's position as these individual ambulances are doing in the neighborhood of 1,700 to 1,800 calls a year. That's going to be sometime in probably 2018, 2019. I could see the addition of one captain at that position, and that would be a non-representative individual, whereas the lieutenants will be maintained in the union. I think that that would give us satisfactory management capability at that point in time, and about that same time, I'm going to be sitting in this chair recommending that you terminate my position and go to a full-time chief, because that certainly is something in the next five to six years that we'll have to take a very serious look at.
And then, I just kind of want to go over a little bit what we've talked about at the commission, and just kind of bring it here, give some more information. So, will a staff medic, once we bring on the lieutenants, will a staff medic be able to earn more than the lieutenants, and, or you could also answer that question by talking about the pay scale?
What we're, what we proposed and has been passed by the commission is that the pay scale that the medics have right now, anyone that would assume the promotion would get a 10% increase of their base pay. And so, the requirement would be that you'd have to be on the staff for five years, and so, somebody that's been on the staff for five years would then get a 10% pay increase as they assume those duties as lieutenant. And so, I don't believe that there would be a position ever where a, even a 15-year veteran would be making more money than a lieutenant would be making.
I only bring that up because then, you know, it shows more of that signs of upward mobility, mobility for the medics, in which we have some great medics who I think are going to be, especially in terms of training, in that, in that regard. And then, lastly, would you talk a little bit about the hiring process, especially for the deputy chief of operations?
If you give me permission to move forward to this, we will be in the process tomorrow. We already have the descriptions, the position descriptions done, and we would be moving forward to get that posted. It'll be posted heavily in the Midwest, and some of those periodicas that we'll use will bleed over into a nationwide capability. And I would estimate that we would be looking at bringing in somebody for a first, a panel. They would, they would be in front of a hiring panel, and that would be composed of two medical directors, a deputy chief, and one person from, we have identified one person that is a former chief in Green Bay that would sit on that panel. From that side, they would then get put in front of the, it would get whittled down to, say, five. I would take a look at those. I would suggest one final hire, or, I'm sorry, before that, the five would go through a medical test with the, with our medical directors. They'll take them, put them through simulation training. They'll ask them to teach a course, and they'll give me the best three that they have. It might be four, it might be two, I'm not sure. And then, those individuals would come forth for a chief's interview, and we would hire from that process.
Okay, would it be possible to get somebody from the commission on the, on that panel as well, and we had possibly talked about a staff member, too?
I wouldn't not have put a staff member on there, but I would probably put a commission member, a staff member. It's a difficult thing for them.
Sure.
We've, we've, we've been in touch with the staff, and they'll be involved with the process behind the scenes, but certainly, a commission member would be a really good idea to add to the commission, to the hiring process.
And then, lastly, with the hiring process, is there a timeframe that you're looking at?
Well, unfortunately, we're delayed well beyond what I wished, I would have liked to have somebody July 1st, but this process wanting to come before you and make sure that we get your approval to move this forward has been delayed, has delayed us some. I would like to get an offer out there sometime in September, thinking that we could probably get a deputy chief on by the 1st of October. And because we have been delayed significantly, I see the lieutenants actually starting the 1st of the year, because the lieutenant's position will require some rework of our contract, and we have a contract expiring this year, so rather than try to do a rework to start somebody, it wouldn't be until maybe November, December at the very earliest. So, we would start some, I would think we'd be looking at least two lieutenants in January of 2016 with the adoption of a new contract.
And I'm happy to hear that we're, we're taking our time on the deputy chief's position and really letting that kind of come together on its own rather than rushing through it. So, I'm, I'm actually, I'm liking to hear that, that timeframe that you've put out. So, thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns?
If we're not hearing any concerns, we can operate under your consensus. We didn't have any item on the agenda this evening to take official action, but I know that the chief would like to get moving on this as quickly as he could. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. So, what exactly are you looking to, instead of having a half-captain to proceed with a deputy chief hire October 1st? That's what you're looking for tonight?
Yes, and we actually had an unfunded mandate, or unfunded position next year in the, to the tune of that deputy chief, because we had no funds for that. So, I do believe that the cost savings will be a much more palatable situation as we go into the budgeting process for next year. Yeah, the funds, as we have it right now, because of the delay and some other things, we're looking at, with the funding that we have right now, if we hire that deputy chief October 1, do not hire any, do not promote any of the lieutenants, that we're looking at a surplus just based on early forecasts of $8,000. So, we're well within the budget of dollars.
But it affects 2016, because it'll be-
It does, and if-
-the chief than the captain.
That's right. If you look at 2016, we made a couple of assumptions. One, we looked at the likelihood of us taking our paramedics from the retirement funding. They're at 4% right now. Everybody else in the city in that position is at about 6.8. So, we're looking at putting them up to 6.8. We'd probably look at some funding difference. So, in 16, the assumption is either it was going to be a captain and a half, or it was going to be two lieutenants, starting January 1, and a deputy chief. If that were the case, all things being considered, the plan we now have is almost $100,000 less than the plan that would have included the captain's position. And then, if you take that out to 2017, and there's a lot of, I included 2017 for two reasons. I wanted to see how it would look, the captain's position versus the lieutenants, but the other thing is, there's a big increase in 2017, if we look at a third station, if we look at another ambulance, and I think it's really important to see those numbers, and to really start to take a look at what we'd be looking at from that perspective, and certainly, the city administrator, and we have been looking at that and talking to Fitchburg and how that would work together. But those are numbers that are very important. But if you take it out to that side, going to the deputy chief and lieutenant's position versus the captain's would be almost $120,000 in 2017 with the savings, and so, I think it's, it's significant that we should look at this as an advantage.
Good. Go ahead, Ms. Linder.
So, just so we're clear that we proved this, we're going to, I mean, you're talking about savings, but the cost of the, Verona's portion of it would increase $32,000 for next year.
It, yes, but that's significantly less than the unfunded portion, as we would have had a captain in the, in the full year of next year.
I do have some questions about the third thing, the third, but I don't know if now is the time, so I'm, I'm okay if we don't talk about that today, but maybe I could just talk to you about it personally sometime, unless you want to talk about it now.
We can-
Third, third, uh, the investigation.
Yeah, I think for, for people that might be wondering about that-
Yeah, I think for people that might be wondering about that, maybe, Brian, you want to just give a little bit of background about why we're talking about a third station and why there's the potential of additional staff with the town of Madison being dissolved and so forth. You might want to spend a little time on that.
Sure. We have, the problem we have is we've got ninety square miles, and we'd like to be in a capability to respond to an emergency within, it's called fractal time in the EMS world, but we like to be able to get to a, any spot with a high acuity call in nine minutes or less ninety percent of the time. So there'll be times when it takes twelve minutes. These are under lights and sirens, but ninety percent of the time, we want to be there in nine minutes or less. We have many portions of the district that are ten, twelve, fourteen minutes right now. One of the worst areas that we have that has a significant population would be the northeastern portion of our district. And so that's going to go up to Highway fourteen and the belt line, and Highway twelve. Takes us a long time to get there. Also takes us a long time to get down to the Oakwood Correctional Facility. We just don't have good roads from where we're coming from. So those are twelve- and fourteen-minute times, even under lights and sirens. So that's a really, it's an inadequate response time, and the only way you can solve that problem is relocation or building new stations. We're at twenty-seven hundred calls right now. By about 2017, we'll be at three thousand calls. The average, if you're just going to go, we utilize something called unit hour utilization, and that backs us into how often an ambulance can be busy and, but still be available, and it's a fine line. Fifteen hundred calls is a pretty standard number that are used to look at how many calls can one ambulance go out until they're used so often that they're starting to eat into your opportunity to respond to a call. Right now, about thirty times a month, we have, both of our ambulances are busy, and we have to rely on mutual aid. So that's growing. So you've got the need for mutual aid, you've got the unit hour utilization, and you've got the extended response times. So there's no question that we could really use a third ambulance in the district. As Pittsburgh moves to build a fire station in that area, they really want to get better service up into that northeast area as well to reduce their response times. At the same time, sometime between now and 2022, Pittsburgh is going to get a fairly sizable amount of the town of Madison that will be annexed into that community. And one of the areas that EMS travels to a lot is that triangle over by Rimrock Road that, right against the belt line there, over by, there's a tavern over there, I can't remember what's the name of that, Badger Bowl, all the way up into that area. We are really not prepared to handle that right at the moment. So we have been, for the last three years, I think, suggesting that this point is coming at some place, and it's not really realistic in my mind to do anything before we get a station. But I can imagine that person that's up on McCoy that calls for an ambulance with the fire station a block away, and now they're waiting twelve or fourteen minutes, it's going to be a difficult situation for us not to have an ambulance up there. But it is time, and that's one of the reasons that we're looking at some of these staffing changes as well, is to move into that era. Whether it happens in 2017 or 2018, in 2017, it would be a great opportunistic time because of the station coming there. 2018 and 2019 is going to become a run volume and unit hour utilization. We're just going to have too much, too much volume to really be able to handle the capacity that we have.
Thank you.
I don't know, I hope that answers it.
Yes, yes.
Other questions or comments? Certainly on Mr. Linder's question about, you know, how it impacts the 2016 budget. We do annual budgets, but we have been projecting this for quite some time and building it into our projections of where we need to be. So this, along with additional needs at the police department and fire department, have a significant impact on our budget, but it's something that we know that we have to do, and we've been talking about it for a number of years. So as far as, yes, it will impact the 2015 and sixteen budget and moving forward, but we'll still be taking action and fall on the 2016 budget. Other questions or concerns? Otherwise, if we have consensus with what the chief has laid out as far as staffing changes, this would allow him to move forward. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, thank you, chief.
Yeah, appreciate it.
We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
And the job that you and the paramedics do every day. Thank you. That concludes the mayor's business for this evening. We will move into the administrator's report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yeah, thank you. This week, April thirteenth through the seventeenth, is Wisconsin's Tornado and Severe Weather Awareness Week. Some information from the state Wisconsin Emergency Management. Wisconsin averages twenty-three tornadoes annually. In 2014, twenty-two tornadoes were reported in Wisconsin by the National Weather Service. Eighteen of those tornadoes occurred in June, and as everyone's aware, one of those tornadoes was an EF3 tornado that hit Verona very close to home. Wanted to take this opportunity to remind people to review their procedures and preparations for severe weather, look into weather radios, look into what they can do to prepare their household. There's additional information available, both on the Dane County website, as well as the Ready Wisconsin, W I dot gov website. And I learned earlier today that County Executive Parisi is planning to visit Verona this Thursday to make a brief statement at the location of one of our warning sirens that was just recently upgraded. That'll be at our wealth number four on Cross Country Road. He'll be out at noon this Thursday, just making a brief statement regarding severe weather awareness week and about the county warning system. Couple other announcements that I have this evening. We have meetings planned next week on Monday and Tuesday. On Monday, there's going to be a meeting of the Community Development Authority, which the council has been invited to as well. That's going to be a workshop for the Community Development Authority. We'll have our consultants from Redevelopment Resources providing a training program and workshop about the roles community development authorities can play, and providing some examples from other communities. And then on Tuesday next week is the annual organizational meeting of the common council. Plans are to start that meeting at seven PM, and that would be the meeting at which the newly re-elected alders take their oath of office, and decisions are made regarding the council president, appointment to the plan commission, and council committee appointments. And then finally, coming up on the thirtieth of this month, the mayor and I are going to be making a presentation on the state of the city to the Verona Area Chamber of Commerce at the State and Baker Cross Plains, and that'll be at seven thirty in the morning. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Years?
One quick question. Where will the CDA meeting take place?
That'll take place here at City Hall.
Any other questions for Mr. Burns? Seeing none, thank you, Bill. Next, we'll have the engineers' report. Mr. Gunlock, please.
Thank you. Several projects to report on this evening. The first is a 2015 street rehabilitation project. The pre-construction conference for that project has been held. Contractor schedule indicates that he'll start work on May eighteenth on the streets in the Cross Country Heights neighborhood. Those streets include a portion of Basswood Avenue, Tamarack Way, Tamarack Court, and a portion of Nine Mound Road. Once those streets are completed, he will move to the Valley View Street and Valley View Court area, also a portion of South Nine Mound Road, and that portion of Paoli Street that's southwest of Bruce Street. Construction generally consists of spot curb and gutter replacement, driveway approach replacement, and street grading or milling and repaving, much as other street rehabilitation projects in the past have been done. Construction end will be approximately September first. Next project is East Verona Avenue-Lincoln Street reconstruction. The pre-construction conference for this project will be held here at City Hall on Thursday. This project will install traffic signals at the East Verona Avenue-Lincoln Street intersection, make modifications to the raised median in front of the new fire station, reconstruct Lincoln Street south of East Verona Avenue to City Hall, and add curb and gutter to a portion of South Main Street between Whale and Road and Prairie Crest Drive. Its anticipated construction will commence on or about April twentieth and be completed in mid-August. Finally, the East Verona Avenue, Old PB intersection and park-and-ride reconstruction. The DOT has led a contract for the construction of the park-and-ride lot and modifications to the intersection. Park-and-ride lot is being enlarged slightly, and bus stops are being added just west of the intersection. During construction, East Verona Avenue will be reduced to one lane in each direction, and Maple Grove Road and Old PB will be closed to traffic. A D two route has been established. That route is through the city, on South Main Street, up North Main Street to Cross Country Road. I heard prior to this evening that apparently there are some problems being, occurring on Paoli Street because of that detour. But that detour will be in place for approximately two months. That completes my report for this evening. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gunlock? Ms. Doyle?
You mentioned problems on Paoli. Is it just increased traffic and?
Well, it's increased traffic, the traffic that comes up on, that was coming up PB and going north, either to Verona Avenue, East Verona Avenue, and coming back into the city. It's all being detoured. So it's being detoured on County Trunk Highway M up to South Main Street and through the city, because the intersection is closed. They can't get through that intersection and won't be able to get through it for approximately two months.
Other questions for Mr. Gunlock? Mr. Steiner?
Yeah, just a follow-up a little bit on that report by Bob. I brought that to the chief's attention tonight after his safety meeting, because those folks, they know that's a bad intersection already. It's a T situation. Sixty-nine comes up and Ts with M, and now M is just a constant flow of traffic because of the detour of Old PB being closed for that project. There's no natural breaks anymore. The natural breaks occurred and allowed a few cars to get out onto M off of Paoli Street. You know, it's been that way forever. But that's a bad situation. The cars were backed up all the way past Jensen's home, which is about the fourth house going down past seniors. And what I am suggesting is putting up a detour sign down by Nine Mound, where Nine Mound goes west off of Paoli Street, and maybe some of those folks then, knowing that they won't, can't get on to M, would take a west turn on Nine Mound, come to the four-way stop with Legion, turn north on Legion, and end up on West Verona Road, and then they can make a decision there. Most people will turn right and go down to the light, and the light will have an arrow, and that would send them north. Well, after mentioning this to Bob, well, that's not set up for that kind of numbers, so that will create probably another issue there with people trying to make the left-hand turn. So I don't have the answer, but we do need to do something, because two months is a, it's a hot time of the year. People are going to take chances at that intersection, and you know what happens when people try to dart out, and a car's moving, and they don't yield to each other, and that leads to some bad things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Other questions or comments for Mr. Gunlock? Not seeing any? Thank you, Bob.
Welcome.
We will move then to committee reports, so begin with the plan commission. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First item is Agenda nine, A1, and since there was questions in the public comments, was that something that we should address first before getting too far?
We can, sure. And I'll ask, if it's okay with you, Mr. Linder, I will ask, Mr. Sear, would you start out, please, and respond to some of the concerns and any updated information that you may have?
Sure, I can touch upon the land use and kind of zoning concerns that were raised, and I'll probably defer to Mr. Burns and Mr. Gunlock on the other items. Regarding one of the items with land use relating to the livestock sitting, which recommends a hundred-foot setback, that is for livestock sitting only. The city does not have to comply with that for apartment land uses. We estimate the building is forty feet off the lot line, and kind of working off of air photos where we kind of think the livestock is actually kind of corralled. We think the setback is actually more than a hundred feet there. So staff is still comfortable that it's located. The developer obviously has selected this lot based upon what he thinks that will work for development. Impacts with farms adjacent to the city are common. When we annex property and develop property kind of along the edges like this, this isn't an uncommon problem. Usually, a lot of times, you get odor complaints. This is probably no different than a lot of the smells that you receive on the east side, the calls that you receive on the east side of the city regarding smells from farms. So staff, staff has no concerns with the adjacent uses there. Long-term to the west, that will be developed at some point, probably residential, similar to what you see in Scenic Ridge. So does it create some short-term issues? Yes, but this is no different than any other type of development on the fringe of the city. Regarding the rezoning of the lots in 2010, it was a rezoning and replat, I believe. So the city replatted the lots, so in the process, there were lot lines that were shifted and moved. I think the developer probably had an extra lot or two that came out of that, and the lots were zoned from the mixed residential to the neighborhood residential. Mixed residential is generally our duplex district, and our neighborhood residential is pretty much a single-family zoning district. Should be pointed out that single-family homes are allowed in that mixed residential zoning district. We do have a few lots actually in Scenic Ridge where people have built single-family homes on that mixed residential zoning district. The replat of that occurred in 2010. It's not uncommon for the city. We actually did that a couple, a year or two ago in the Hawthorne Hills neighborhood, kind of northeast of the Glacier Edge Elementary School. There were two duplex lots that were purchased. They resurveyed those, turned them into single-family lots. So we've done that elsewhere, regarding that buffer between single-family uses and multi-family. You know, there's a variety of areas, once again, in the city that we have multi-family right next to single-family. We have it in Hawthorne Hills, Sienna Ridge on the north side of the city, you have the apartments and the single-family homes east of there. And then also on Harper, we have single-family homes on one side of the street and multi-family on the other side. In 2005, there was reference that the city approved plans for lower density for this lot. There was discussion and action in 2005 regarding what the recommended density of that should be. It's not exactly clear on how that motion was made, if it was part of the rezoning or if it was just part of a general discussion on it. I have a feeling it was probably just general discussion, and the recommendation was a lower density in what's allowed by ordinance. In general, or I guess, I guess factually, case law does not allow you to conditionally rezone properties like that. You cannot conditionally zone a property to meet a certain residential density requirement. That's, when every time that's gone to court, it's been thrown out by the court, says that you cannot do that. An appropriate use of conditional rezoning is what we did for the school site on the city's west side, where we conditionally zoned it upon it passing a referendum. Timing and trigger points like that are appropriate, but conditions on specific zoning items relating to rezones of densities or taking densities down is not allowed. I should also point out, we've had, you know, after that was done in 2005, we did have developers' agreements that actually had the twelve dwelling units per acre, which is being requested tonight as well, too. So I understand that was in the minutes from 2005, but it's something that, you know, it was action that was taken that, you know, I cannot recommend, because it would just be, if it went to court, you'd lose in a second. I can stand by that, too. So you cannot conditionally rezone it that way. So I guess those are the items that I can touch on. I'm sure Mr. Gunlock could add to some of the bridge items as well. I'm sure Mr. Burns can probably take care of the rest.
Thank you. Mr. Gunlock, would you start out?
Yeah, first, let's address stormwater. The developer of the apartment buildings has every right to use the regional stormwater detention basin that lies just south of eighteen-one fifty-one. When the subdivision was originally developed, the, all the area that drains to the north, including these multi-family lots, was included in the stormwater master plan for that regional basin. The city does own that basin, just so that it gets maintained, but every parcel of lot that drains to that, to that basin has the right to use that basin. The water on Lot One, the runoff from that lot, all of the parking facilities are draining to the, to their interior storm sewer system that drains to the detention basin, and they have an underdrain system around the building that collects all the roof water. So- So all of the hard surfaces on this property are draining to the detention basin. As far as the bridge design, oh, I should go back, designs for the stormwater management plans for Lot One and Lot Two. Lot One, the Public Works Department has a full copy of that report. Mr. Cislik down there, Marty Cislik, has a copy of that when that, when that was approved two years ago. As we approve the stormwater management plans, he gets full copies of that information. Lot Two is currently being finalized. It's currently still under review. There were a few things that the developer had to change or his engineer had to change. Those came in on Friday, and the stormwater engineer is reviewing those, and that, that will be approved this week. And that report will then be sent to Mr. Cislik at Public Works. Erosion control permit for the city will be issued at that time. As far as the safety of the bridge, the bridge has a thirty-foot clear. Locust Drive is posted at twenty-five miles an hour. Even though people may be doing forty-five, it is posted at twenty-five miles an hour. A thirty-foot clear surface to fifteen-foot, basically travel lanes on a twenty-five mile an hour street is acceptable for both traffic and bicycle traffic. We are putting an eight-foot path, pedestrian path, on the east side of that bridge. That is also acceptable. The bridge plans were approved by the DOT. Because it is their bridge, we're modifying their bridge, they approved the plans. The pedestrian bicycle coord, or the pedestrian and bicycle coordinator for the DOT also approved the pedestrian accommodations in accordance with Trans-75. And I can provide those approvals to Mr. Burns if he so chooses. Now, we have them. We did not forward them onto the city, but we do have those approvals from the DOT. So the sidewalk was put on the east side of the bridge because the larger the two developments, Cathedral Point has approximately twice the lots that Scenic Ridge does. So we figured the majority of the pedestrian traffic would be coming out of Cathedral Point. I really don't see a lot of pedestrian traffic using that bridge because on the northwest side of the bridge, it's all industrial development. There is no residential development there whatsoever. It's all industrial. On the other side, it's all apartments, and I don't see a lot of children in that area. There are some, but if they do build a school, or if and when they do build a school to the south, the children that are in that neighborhood are on the east side of Locust Drive, would stay on the east side of Locust Drive to walk to the, to the new school. And I'm not even sure that that area would be in the school district or the school area for that new school to the south. They might still be over on the school off of Waylon Road, so. But the bridge, the bridge does meet DOT requirements for both bike and pedestrian, for traffic and bicycle traffic when the street is posted at twenty-five miles an hour. If it was posted at forty-five miles an hour, no, then the clear width would have to be more than that. But at twenty-five miles an hour, thirty-foot is acceptable.
Okay, Mr. Burns, you have some additional response?
Yeah, I can respond to some of the questions about the bridge agreement, the amended agreement, the costs and the surety. There was discussion about the bridge as the Scenic Ridge and Cathedral Point subdivisions were being planned, going back at least to 2007. And at that time in 2007, there were multiple cost estimates prepared, looking at different widths of payment as well as sidewalk or bike path on one or both sides of the bridge. In 2008, the city entered into an agreement regarding the Locust Drive Bridge with the developers of the Scenic Ridge and the Cathedral Point subdivision. At that time of the 2008 agreement, it did not identify a plan or cross-section for the bridge. It identified that the city had the ability to make improvements to the bridge. The design was not finalized, but that the city would prepare a design. It's understood that we would need to work through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. And that agreement identified that the city would review and discuss the design of the bridge with the developers prior to construction. And then, under the terms of that agreement, the city would be funding the improvements to the bridge. Developers would be responsible for paying for the cost of that upon acceptance of the bridge improvements, and they would have up to five years to pay for those improvements. There was also discussion about the timing of the bridge improvements. At the time of that 2008 agreement, there was the decision made to not require that the bridge improvements be made prior to any development in the subdivisions. And it was discussed that the bridge improvements would be made the year after East Chapel Royal connected from Locust Drive to Range Trail, providing another access for traffic within those developments while the bridge work was being done. As the city moved forward, we approved development agreements for Scenic Ridge and Cathedral Point. Development in Scenic Ridge started progressing faster than development within the Cathedral Point subdivision. And the city was looking at a situation approximately 2012 where we had a number of residents, particularly in the Scenic Ridge development, that were using Locust Drive and a desire to have Locust Drive reconstructed. That is something that was discussed in the original agreement, but we felt that we wanted to get those improvements to the Locust Drive reconstruction south of the bridge done as quickly as possible with the development occurring there. And we entered into an amended development agreement, or amended bridge agreement with the developers of Scenic Ridge and Cathedral Point. And that amended agreement accomplished a couple of different things. One of those was that it identified the timeline for the reconstruction of Locust Drive south of the bridge, with one segment being done in 2013 and another segment being done in 2014. And that project was done and funded directly by the developers so that the city did not have to front the cost for the reconstruction of Locust Drive. It also identified that East Whispering Pines Way needed to be connected from Range Trail through to Locust Drive in 2014. At that point, we felt that the best way to quickly get a connection between Range Trail and Locust Drive was following Whispering Pines Way, which was closer to being completed than Chapel Royal. So the decision was made, connect Whispering Pines Way in 2014 to get that done. And then Chapel Royal was to be connected no later than 2017. It also identified that the bridge improvements would be made following the, or no later than the connection of Chapel Royal. That was consistent with the original development agreement. And it also identified the cross-section for the bridge of a thirty-foot pavement section with the bike and pedestrian path on one side. And that's one of the details that we wanted to get locked down, that as we saw that the development, particularly Scenic Ridge, was nearing completion, that we knew what the section would be. We had agreement on that. We could get an updated cost estimate and make sure that, that we had sufficient surety in place from the developers. As the developments were proceeding, both Scenic Ridge and Cathedral Point, with every development phase, the developers were required to provide some form of surety to the city. Typically, that was in the form of a letter of credit, and that letter of credit would give the ability of the city to draw upon that if needed for improvements that are required under the agreements if they were not being completed. And as part of the current development phases with Cathedral Point Phase Four and Scenic Ridge Phase Six, we do have surety in place for those developments. We also have language in the development agreements that specifically refer to the bridge and the bridge cost estimates, and they reserve that a portion of those letter of credits would be retained, equal to the estimated cost of the bridge plus inflation costs. And those letters of credit are in place. The cost for the bridge, as I had mentioned, would be due upon completion of the bridge. So at this point, the developers have not made payment to the city for the bridge. Under the terms of the agreement, they would be making those payments once the bridge is completed, and we'd have the ability to maintain that letter of credit or alternative surety to ensure that the payments are made. There was a question raised about the open records and the city's compliance with that. On multiple occasions, staff had provided documents to Mr. Cislik, including the planning department files, the administration files, development agreement files for Scenic Ridge and Cathedral Point, and the Locust Drive Bridge file. For the amendments to the bridge agreement, those did go through the Public Works Committee and were ultimately approved by the city council. And the city council approval was reflective on the documents that were provided. We also provided copies of the most recent surety for the two developments, as well as excerpts from the development agreement language. We certainly have tried to provide the documents, and if there are other documents that are desired, we'd be happy to provide those. I guess I would just comment that we received pretty broad requests for documents and took the approach of providing access to the files, multiple stacks of files and papers, provided Mr. Cislik with several hours to review those, and made the offer to find other documents if requested and if there were specific requests. So I believe that we've tried to provide the information. We've described the documents are available, and if there's a request for additional information, we'd certainly be happy to provide that. And I'd be available to answer any other questions.
Thank you. There is no motion before us. We can have either a motion or we can have questions, comments. Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-15-011, approving a conditional use permit to allow an apartment land use on Lot One of Scenic Ridge.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yers. We are open for discussion on the motion. Mr. Linder?
Thank you. Just a little more background on it. The proposed conditional use permit will allow for the construction of forty-five apartment units on Lot One of the Scenic Ridge subdivision. The apartments would include an onsite tennis court. This item was postponed by the council on March ninth due to concerns about traffic. At the March ninth meeting, council directed staff to complete a traffic study in West Chapel Royal Drive. In addition, the council referred the project to the Public Works Committee, Public Safety Committee and the Planning Commission for discussion. Both the Public Works Committee and Public Safety Committee discussed the project on March 23rd. The Public Works Committee directed staff to paint crosswalks at the intersection of West Chapel Royal Drive and Acker Lane. The Public Safety Committee took no action at this time on the installation of stop signs at West Chapel Royal Drive and Acker Lane. The Planning Commission discussed the project on March 2nd and addressed topics including traffic, traffic enforcement, grading, stormwater management, reducing the density and future location of multifamily developments and neighborhoods. A lot of the items we just discussed. The Planning Commission held a required public hearing on March 2nd, 2015, and voted four to two to recommend approval of the conditional use permit. The Planning Commission discussed the project again on April 8th and discussed, and discussion included planned improvements to the Locust Drive Bridge and the future location of multifamily housing in neighborhoods. The Planning Commission held a second public hearing on April 8th, 2015, and voted five to zero to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit. I'd like to add that, you know, some of the things that we did learn, in my opinion, about multifamily is if there's a, allowing multifamily direct access out of the development without it going by residential, I think that's one thing that we can learn from this. And the other is, you know, I don't know if it's by timing, if it's possible to do the multifamily first, a lot of these issues will be resolved. So those are a couple of things to think about as we go forward, particularly the north neighborhood. At this time, it's, I don't see any, the developers meeting all the requirements we set by the city. I think it's time we need to approve this. But I do understand the citizens' concerns on this location.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Other questions, comments? Ms. Doyle?
So it sounds like from the explanation that it was a DOT recommendation that changed the plan for the pedestrian lanes on the, on the bridge from two lanes to one lane. Is that correct?
Mr. Gunlock?
No, that was, decision was made in the city. But the DOT approved our final design.
So I guess just as a follow-up, it sounded like that was a specific documentation that was requested to see how that decision-making played out. Is that something that you provided then, Mr. Burns?
Mr. Burns?
I don't believe that we have any documentation that describes the thought process of that. We have provided the original and the amended agreement. I recall discussion at both the Public Works Committee, I think primarily at the Public Works Committee, perhaps some discussion at the city council meeting as well. I know that part of the discussion at the Public Works Committee included items that Mr. Gunlock had addressed of the design speed of the bridge, the location of the residential neighborhoods to the north, the thought that if there was a pedestrian bike path, that that would best accommodate that on the east side of the bridge. I think one of the other considerations was that, at least from what I've seen back from the estimates from around 2007, when this was first discussed, through 2012, 2013, there were significant increases in the anticipated costs, both just with construction costs as well as we started getting into the design, what Wisconsin Department of Transportation was requiring as far as how that was built and what types of mobilization and temporary improvements were made there. So I think weighing the factors, you know, my recollection of the Public Works Committee discussion was weighing the factors, weighing the costs, weighing the safety and the recommendations. The feeling was that the design with the combination pedestrian bike path on the east side would be appropriate.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo kind of what Alder Linder said about, you know, lessons learned going forward. I definitely think we need to consider traffic upfront, and if we do multifamily, and I'm not anti-apartment or anything like that, I think apartments are fine, that we need to do it in a way that minimizes impact of traffic on the rest of the neighborhood. I also think we need to improve our tools to notify people. And I think that's something we should probably just look at in the budget going forward and maybe, you know, I know staff followed our city ordinances and standard practices, but maybe we need to budget a little bit more money to go above and beyond that. And then I guess my third lesson, I think, that we should learn is that it's really important to digitize everything because it makes it easier to find, it makes it easier to distribute to people. And, you know, if we have it front-facing on the website, people can just find whatever they're looking for themselves. And I think, you know, I realize, you know, twenty years ago, ten years ago, I mean, this technology really wasn't widespread. So I understand why, you know, there's, there's not meeting, you know, agendas from 2000, but I think going forward, it's really important to get as much stuff as we can in, in electronic format.
Other questions, comments on the motion? Ms. Doyle?
I do appreciate both Alder Linder and Alder Diaz's comments about mitigating traffic when it comes to multifamily development. And one interesting piece that came up at a recent countywide multifamily housing discussion was federal data that showed that there is actually less of a traffic impact with multifamily housing developments as opposed to single-family home dwellings. The caveat with that was, though, access to mass transit systems. So that's one thing to consider with us taking out language supporting mass transit in our north neighborhood plan, is that is an alternative that could help mitigate traffic impacts. Another question that I did have was, Mr. Sayer, you mentioned that there might be some short-term issues regarding the proximity to the agricultural usage. Would one of those have anything to do with water quality or environmental impacts, or were you just talking like in regard to smells and things of that nature?
Mr. Sayer?
I would suspect smells, odors, noises, you know, early-hour operations potentially. It's, it's an active farm. I mean, you're going to have that issue, but you have that issue on the edge of the city, in any city that's on the edge like this where you have, you know, city land uses abutting, farming land uses, you're going to have that conflict. And it's not much you can do about it.
Thank you. Other questions, comments on the motion? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I just wanted to make one comment, that I do plan on voting against this. I fully understand why people are voting, voting for it. I recognize the property rights, the developer, and I realize this was, you know, zoned back in 2006, I believe, and I understand that, you know, Verona's grown a lot since then, and it's entirely possible that it was impossible to, to kind of anticipate the concerns and the growth of Verona. But I just don't think the city is organized as we should be and that, and that we have sufficient, you know, traffic mitigation things in place. And so, and just as a kind of, I guess, protest, I would say, I plan on voting against it and just, just hope that we take the lessons away from this thing and apply them to the north neighborhood plan.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
Aye.
And we have two voting no. Mr. Diaz and Mr. Steiner. The motion passes. Item 9A2, Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-15-015, approving a conditional use permit to allow group development at 324 South Main Street.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Linder?
Thank you. The proposed conditional use permit will allow for the construction of a 780 square-foot detached garage at 324 South Main Street. The proposed garage requires a CUP as multiple buildings will be located on a parcel and is classified. is classified as a group development. The Plan Commission held a required public hearing on April 8th, 2015, and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the conditional use permit. In a nutshell, he used, the applicant liked to add a garage, and it's kind of behind the trees, and he does have a little shed there. I think his intention is probably to take it down, although that was not a requirement, but it shows that little shed in the picture that's in our packet.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Questions, comments? The applicant is here this evening, if we have questions for him. Seeing no questions or comments, sorry, Mr. Steiner?
More of a comment than a question. You know, we're working on developing the downtown, and we're buying property in parcels downtown, and, and I know this particular property was possibly targeted at one time to be some type of a downtown business, and, and now here we go agreeing to what the owner wants to do, which I will probably agree with it, but it's just another case where we're sending conflicting comments to the public. We want to control that downtown and do something for the business environment, but then, in the same breath, a house that's been there longer than most of us have been in Verona, and we're going to anchor that in probably for the life of this owner. It's a conflicting signal, though, and people notice those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Ms. Doyle?
I appreciate Alder Steiner's concerns about the conflicting messages, but I think one of the key elements to having a successful downtown is having a mix of businesses and residents in your downtown area, so that the businesses that are drawn to that particular area do have built-in bases of customers, and just to weigh in as well as a neighbor of this proposed, proposed change, I fully support it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? I would just add the comment that we discussed this at the Plan Commission, and we commend Mr. Griffiths for the design and what he's gonna do with the building to make sure that it matches the existing house and existing garage, so thank you for that. Seeing no other questions or comments, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-15-015. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Mayor. Next is Agenda Item 9A3. I make a motion to approve Resolution R-15-016, approving a certified survey map to create three lots located at the northeast corner of Thousand Oaks Trail and Kettle Marine Trail.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Linder?
The proposed certified survey map will create three lots at the northeast corner of Thousand Oaks Trail and Kettle Marine Trail. Lot 1 of the CSM will be approximately six acres, and will have the future United Vaccines building located on it. Lot 2 will be approximately 1.7 acres, and Lot 3 will be approximately 2.2 acres. Future users for lots 2 and 3 have not been identified at this time, but will most likely be smaller industrial uses. The Plan Commission discussed this item at the April 8th, 2015 meeting, and voted a five to zero to recommend approval of the CSM. The main reason the applicant was doing this is for making it, I believe, a little more easier to sell.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing no questions or comments, I will call the question. All those in favor of approval of Resolution R-15-016 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Linder?
Thank you. Next item is Agenda Item 9A4. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-15-017, approving the release of an access restriction on a Liberty Business Park plat.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Linder?
Thank you. The proposed resolution will allow the city to release an access restriction to Liberty Drive on the Liberty Business Plat, Park Plat for Lot 11. The owner of Lot 11 is proposing to construct a 17,000-square-foot commercial building and is requesting right-in, right-out access to Liberty Drive. The Plan Commission reviewed and approved the site plan for Lot 11 on April 8th, 2015 that contained right-in, right-out access to Liberty Drive. The site plan was approved with the condition that access to Liberty Drive shall not be permitted until the City Council, Common Council releases the access restriction from the Liberty Business Park Plat. The attached resolution in our packet would release the access restriction for the area identified on the site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Are there questions or comments? You've heard the background? Questions or comments? I'm not seeing any. I will call the question. All those in favor of approval of Resolution R-15-017 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Linder, anything else in the Plan Commission?
Nope, that is all.
Thank you very much. We'll move then next to the Finance Committee. Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda Item 9B1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $304,859.83.
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Linder. Ms. Doyle, please.
By way of explanation, there were no extraordinary expenditures tonight. Some notable replacements where we have half a down payment on a snowplow truck in the amount of $37,216. And if there are any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions on the payment of bills this evening? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried, and the bills are approved. Anything else in the Finance Committee?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Then we'll move to Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Mr. Years, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under 9C1, I'd like to make a motion to approve a temporary Class B beer license for the Hometown Brew Down Event on Saturday, June 20th, from Michael Bryan of Ice Inc.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Touche. Mr. Years?
Ice Inc. has applied for a temporary Class B beer license for a Hometown Brew Down Event Saturday, June 20th, 2015. This is a new event to the city of Verona and will take place in Hometown Community Park behind City Hall. This event is for ages 21 and older only, and will feature a number of breweries from around the state who will be providing samples of some of their beer. A band will be playing, and food will be available for purchase at the event. Proceeds for the event will benefit the Verona Area Ice, whoops, Ice Hockey Rink.
You've heard the explanation. Are there any questions or comments? The Safety Committee met this evening and reviewed these. Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Years?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve a special event permit for the Verona Music Festival hosted by the Verona Area Chamber of Commerce, July 24 through 25, 2015.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Years?
Thank you. The Verona Area Chamber of Commerce is planning to hold a Verona Music Festival as a new event on July 24 and 25, 2015. This event will be held, and will be held at Hometown Community Park behind City Hall. The event will feature several music performances headlined by the Wisconsin Chamber Orchestra performing music from the Eagles on Saturday night. The Chamber estimates that the event could drop to eight to 12,000 attendees for the two-day event. This is an, I think this is an exciting new event for the city, and they'll, well, we'll talk more about it the next Agenda Item.
You've heard the background. Any questions or comments on the motion? Questions or comments? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approval of the temporary beer and wine license?
Nope.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Special event permit for the Verona Music Festival? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Years?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve a temporary Class B beer and wine license for the Verona Music Festival from the Verona Area Chamber of Commerce.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Years?
Carl Curtis of the Verona Area Chamber of Commerce has applied for a temporary alcohol license to sell beer and wine at the Verona Music Festival. This will be a new way of doing things, to a degree, here in Verona. There will not be fencing, so this is gonna be a very family-friendly event, so you can come with your family, purchase beer and wine to watch the performance. One reason behind not putting up the fencing was the, so people could come and not sit outside the fences, but also take part in the rest of the festival as a whole, so that they'd be more apt to partake in the food and the beverages, so that we can promote Verona business.
And you've heard the background. Mr. Touche?
I'd like to add, the theme being music, not drinking, unlike, unlike hometown days, where we have the beer tent, which beer tent is, is the theme of that area, so we double fence that. I mean, this is really about the music, not about consuming alcohol, so that's kind of a new thing for us, and I'm very happy about it.
Great comment. Any additional comments, questions, concerns? Mr. Linder?
Just, just one question. Where do the proceeds go to on this event?
It's the Chamber, but the event is free to the public.
Not the beer?
Well, not the beer. The proceeds there would go, would go to, bringing the Wisconsin Chamber Orchestra here, I mean, that was a costly move by, by the Chamber. They have some sponsors, but this will also help them out for that.
It's about the music, not the beer. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve a temporary Class B beer and wine license. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Anything else in Public Safety and Welfare?
Nothing further.
All right, thank you. Under old business, we have discussion and possible action regarding Resolution R-15-018, authorizing preparation of a boundary agreement with the town of Verona pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 66.0301. Mr. Burns, if you would, please?
Yeah, the City Council has previously met and discussed boundary agreements, both with the city of Madison as well as the town of Verona, and have directed staff to begin discussions on a potential boundary agreement with the town of Verona. Staff have met on several occasions discussing a framework and topics for an agreement, and at this time, we have a resolution for your consideration which would authorize preparation of a boundary agreement. This is not a binding action, it's not something that's necessarily required by the statute, but it was thought that it may make sense to go forward with this for both municipalities to have the opportunity to go on record indicating that they wish to continue pursuing boundary agreement discussions. Town staff wanted to bring this forward in particular because of some turnover on the town board with a new town chair and a couple of new town board members. Since we are just in the process of discussion to go on record, that we want to continue pursuing this. We also, as we had started discussions, there's a couple of different statutory processes for boundary agreements. The primary two methods are what's called a 66.0301 and a 66.0307, which refer to different sections of Wisconsin statutes. The 0301, which is being recommended, is a more streamlined process. It allows for agreements of up to 10 years in length, and those do have the ability to be renewable by the municipalities, but you can't have an initial term longer than 10 years. The other process, 0307, it's somewhat more of an involved review process, does require the Wisconsin Department of Administration to review and sign off, and that is for agreements that are at least 10 years longer, although they can be longer than the 10 years. The 0307, the longer of the two processes, actually by statute, requires an authorizing resolution, very similar to the one before you tonight. The 0301 does not by statute require a resolution, but, you know, again, the thought is that it may not be a bad idea, and it would be an opportunity for both communities to go on record indicating they wish to continue pursuing an agreement. If there is action on this tonight, and I should add that the town board has previously met and adopted a very similar resolution, which is included in the packet. If there were action on this tonight, and if this were approved, staff would continue discussions and work on putting together a framework. We'd likely have a discussion with the council in a closed session at a future meeting, discussing the status of that framework, and then have the goals of ultimately bringing options for an agreement before the council for formal consideration. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burns? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. So, just to be absolutely clear, we could, could vote for this resolution if we didn't like the boundary agreement, we could vote against it later.
That's correct. This is not binding in any way, it's just a signal of intent to work on the agreement.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to be clear.
Other questions or comments, potential motions? Mr. Years?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-15-018, authorizing preparation of a boundary agreement with the town of Verona.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Questions or comments? You've heard the background? Certainly there'd be more information coming. Mr. Linder?
Do we have to formally say which statute?
We do that in the resolution, I believe.
Wasn't in the motion, that's all.
It's included in the resolution. I don't think it needs to be in the motion, since the motion is to approve the resolution, which includes that.
Okay. Just double-checking, thanks.
I'd be happy to add it into the motion if anybody wanted it.
Any other questions, concerns on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, and that motion carries. New business, do we have approval of operator licenses this evening?
We have two operator licenses, both for Hop House from Sarah Hoax and Jennifer Kemp.
You've heard the applicants. What's your pleasure? Mr. Years?
Move approval?
We have a motion by Mr. Years to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Questions or comments? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, and that motion carries. We are on to announcements. Mr. Steiner?
Thanks, Mayor. There's a movement in south-central Wisconsin affecting a lot of cities, and we're trying to make these cities more dementia-friendly. We are discussing that at the senior commission meetings the last couple of months, and if there are people that would like to get involved or, or share their feelings about it, it's a 6:00 PM meeting Tuesday at the Senior Center, Senior Commission. Neighboring cities have already adopted this type of deal, and maybe something that we should explore and think about doing. What it does is allow businesses to take on training, how to recognize people with dementia, and to help them stay in their homes, and it's kind of a commu, small-town, community-type deal where you help your neighbors, so they can stay in their homes. And, but you need to be aware of it, because it's not always real noticeable. I'm learning quite a bit about it as we've been doing this now for a couple of months. On Wednesday, we have Verona Area Historical Society meeting at 3:00 PM at the Senior Center. We continue our discussions on city life in the early 20th century. This topic will be discussed this month, in May. Then, everyone goes golfing for about four months, and we don't have a historical society meeting, which is testimony to how these elderly, as we grow older, we're staying more active. And, please, if you've never been to an historical society, it's growing, the topics we're using and discussing are becoming more popular, and some of you young people here are gonna get older, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Steiner, thank you for bringing up the issue of dementia. It is a very serious and a, and a growing issue around the country, and a lot of people think that it just impacts older adults, and that's not the case. It can impact people at a very young age, so it is a very serious disease that's out there. So, thank you for bringing that up this evening. Any additional announcements this evening? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a motion by Mr. Years to adjourn. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. We will see you on the reorganization meeting. Thank you. Oppose, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. We will see you on the reorganization meeting. Thank you.